Hi, everybody. Welcome to the August 27th School Committee meeting. Like the motion to call meeting to order. Is there a motion?
There's a call to order tonight.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is where Annie told me I don't need a motion to call meeting to order. Alright. As part of the adjustments to the agenda number three, I'd like to ask that we adjust the executive session to actually be at the end. We could stay in here, but that will allow folks to give their presentation before we go into exec session.
Before they know it.
And before they know it. And were there any other adjustments to the agenda?
No, that was it for me, unless others.
Okay. Alright, then with that, we will move executive session to be at the conclusion of the meeting, and we'll move into number four, presentations and discussion items. Alright, Mr. Beck, Hopkins Academy Student Handbook.
So, there's one difference. I want to, I know you guys have the opportunity to, is it okay if I pull up here?
Yes, yeah, please. And shout toward that microphone.
From this summary that was provided for the July meeting, the only addition on here that's different from the July meeting is making a clarification around the definition for the valedictorian. To note, valedictorian is a ceremonial position in the community, as using everything. And at many schools, including in this community, there's a prize that's given, and I believe it's overseen by the board of trustees, but there's a scholarship that's awarded here called the Emerson Prize. And a few years ago, probably more than a decade ago, the language was changed in that prize, and I think that provides us with guidance for language, for the definition for the valedictorian, which is that the student gets to have taken classes at Hopkins Academy for a minimum of three years, which is something that other schools do. It was one of those things that in two prior schools where I was the principal, that change had preceded me, but what it did is it prevented students from having really high grades in through the 10th grade, then subsequently becoming full-time dual enrollment students, and not having those courses count into their GPA. So those students never took the challenging courses of the junior and senior year, and therefore were not being measured on the same stick. But also, so that students coming in from other schools didn't end up in a situation where you had a really strong, high-achieving student who only had one year of grades in the senior year could then, in class rank, class rank is class rank. There isn't anything that we can do about that, nor is there anything that we should do about that. But that's something that's private, it's not public. That goes on individual student transcripts. So a top-ranked student is still the top-ranked student. But I've heard feedback, you know, I know there was a comment in the survey that the school committee put out, and I had two meetings after graduation this year individually with sets of parents who just wanted to throw out the idea of making this change, and Angie Cullen was extremely supportive of making the change because, again, that's how we operated at the prior schools, and I believe it's a common practice that is more reflective of having the valedictorian be somebody who's representative of the school community rather than just the top-ranked student in the school. And so that language is on this summary of changes. The position of valedictorian is the top-ranked student in the senior class for the ceremonial purposes of addressing their class and community at graduation. In order for a student to qualify for the ceremonial status, this student must have completed courses at Hopkins Academy for at least three school years.
And is that exclusive to seventh?
No, it's only nine through 12. Only nine through 12.
Is that, do you think that's clear? That it's only the way that this wording is?
Because class GPA calculation doesn't begin until grade nine, so GPAs are not calculated for courses taken in the middle school. So for example, even the advanced courses that students take in French 1, Spanish 1, or Algebra 1 in the 8th grade, they don't even, they're not even awarded credit for them because colleges won't even look at anything that students take prior to grade nine. They're only interested in courses that students take from grade nine on.
So just to kind of follow this, should it say something like a student must have completed GPA contributing courses at Hopkins for at least three school years?
That's inherent in our graduation requirements, they can't avoid that. So in other words, they have, they have to meet our graduation requirements.
Yeah.
You know, so there's all of the core courses, they'll have to take at least three years of math, at least three years of science, at least three years of, even though our graduation requirements are four. So if they've transferred in, let's say in the 9th grade, they would still qualify to compete for that status, but if they, if they transfer in thereafter, then they, they could still be the top-ranked student in the class, but they could not be awarded the ceremonial status of valedictorian even if they were the top-ranked student.
So I, I mean, I understand it after you were explaining it, I was just thinking, if somebody had a child who was there during the 7th and 8th grade and thought that that counted for three years?
It, but that's clearly described in the, in the program of studies that, you know, those courses are not awarded credit. There's no credit that's associated with them. And in the GPA calculations, if that's something that we should add to the program of studies, language that indicates, you know, class rank is only, in fact, there is, it is clarified, class rank isn't, isn't, doesn't begin to become calculated until after the, until the middle of the 10th grade year.
Okay.
So that is actually in the program of studies.
So I think what I, I think what you're asking, Heather, is could it be possible, although I have lots of, a student could go attend 7th and 8th grade at Hopkins Academy, let's say they went to another district for my 10th and 11th grade, and they came back with senior year, and misinterpreted this as maybe that I did attend Hopkins. Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking if it could be misinterpreted as three school years inclusive of 7th and 8th.
That's not what we do. Somebody interpreted it.
Exactly. That's all.
So if I'm going to add-
I know what the intent is, I get-
I would add the language between grades nine and 12.
That would clear it up.
So clarify that for the purpose of this definition, rather than relying on other things, other areas for people to research and cross-reference. That makes sense?
Sounds good.
And then wanting to address, I know that one of the members in the committee had a question about college courses not being counted in GPA. That's something that's already been approved in the program of studies, and so this in the handbook was just updating the handbook to make sure that the student handbook information that's available there is consistent with what we have in the program of studies. But I did want, want to be able to explain that students certainly are not penalized for that, they receive their own transcripts from the colleges. And I went through with Ms. Cullen, and several years ago, and we did the exercise again last week as she came in to begin to do student schedules prior to the start of the school year. And colleges do, so when a student applies to college, for example, if my, when my son applies to college, for all of the courses that are on his transcript, first of all, class rank is de-emphasized. Over the last 10 years, the criteria for college admission, the top criteria, has become challenging coursework. And you'll see that also reflected when Dr. McKenzie does her presentations, or any of us do our presentations, on secondary schools and our, our status in terms of accountability. That challenging coursework, the number of students that we have taking challenging coursework that's preparing them for post-secondary school is part of what we're going to be measured on, like every other school. We're in a great situation because again, our faculty has removed the arbitrary prerequisites and opened up challenging coursework to any student in the school, which is great. So we're on good footing there. But we've also increased the number of students who are taking college-level coursework. And basically what colleges do when they get the application, while we add those to the transcript as transfer credit, they're put in as Level 4 courses because they're college courses, which is basically the same as an advanced placement course. And so colleges, when they get that, they do their own GPA calculation. So a student will have a transcript from here that will have the college coursework on it. They'll also receive a transcript from the college, so they'll have the college GPA that will also be sent off. So they'll have a Hopkins GPA, a GPA from the institution. The colleges basically take all of that and put it together, and they do their own GPA calculations based on how they weight things. In fact, our GPA calculation, the algorithm that we use is set up based on the state college system in their admissions program. And Ms. Cullen had done that research when she came in and made the recommendation that we make the change to have that be reflective, to have that algorithm be reflective of what, at the very least, Massachusetts State Colleges are doing in terms of their application of weighting and examining how challenging the coursework is for a student. So students certainly get rewarded. It not being figured into class rank is a common practice. And that holds true also for transfer credit if a student comes in from another high school. Part of the reason for that, and I can give a juxtaposition, we, we have a, an arrangement with Virtual High School. And so our student takes a course at Virtual High School. Ultimately, still, as the, as the principal, I am the arbiter of any potential grade questions or disputes, even though it's done at another school. And that's part of the arrangement, part of the memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding that Virtual High School puts in place, is that our principal ultimately gets to oversee. During the time that I've been here, there have been two disputes that we've created opportunities for students to do things because of extenuating circumstances. That doesn't exist at the college level. I have no say. I have no say if a student transfers from South Hadley or Boise, Idaho. I have no say in what comes in. And so that can create huge discrepancies in the coursework that a student takes and create inequities when we're measuring class rank and all of those things. So it's common practice even at the college level. For example, I attended UMass Lowell in my first couple of years, and even though on my Worcester State transcript, all of my grades are there, that's not configured into my college GPA from the school that I graduated from. So that's very common practice also across high schools because we don't have any say, nor, nor do we have, can we manage the program of studies that come from those colleges to be able to weight them in, you know, there's remedial coursework that students do. And again, removing this was something, while I think it's always been in place in many schools, many schools really made a point of ensuring that it wasn't included in the GPA calculation within the school around the time of ed reform, primarily because the state at that time had opened up dual enrollment and was funding it. So there were a number of students who took on dual enrollment because it was cost-efficient for their families. And at that time, there were some students who, you know, they weren't taking very challenging courses at the college level, but those were being weighted more as college courses, and that created inequities because the schools can't manage that through their principal and guidance. So that's basically the reason for, for not counting it in the school's GPA calculations, but the students still get rewarded, and those weights, the colleges are better able to take a look at another college's program of studies and have it, have a clearer understanding of what those weights mean on a student's application. So I hope that answers Mr. Shannon's question. And certainly, I'm amenable to striking the GPA information from the student handbook if that's helpful, because it is already in the program of studies and is something that's already been approved by the school committee.
And I think what you said was a barometer, and I think we need to strike it. Was there any other?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So for the student handbook and program of studies update, were there, or actually, it was just like the student handbook, were there any other areas that we needed to talk about for clarification? This is really coming out of my last meeting, so. Okay, I think we do need to take action on approving it, say as amended. As amended. Yeah. She said 12. I'm sure the student handbook is number 12.
12.
Okay. Aye. Alright. Now, the program of studies.
So the program of studies, we have, we have a programmatic change where we are defending Consider Science Program courses. There are courses that are not being offered in the coming year, so changing those courses that were initially being slated to add the phrase "not offered" in 2018, 2019. And then adding the course Media and Communications as a 7th and 8th grade elective, and you can see the course description in the summary, to replace Middle School Home Economics as a middle school elective option. And then with the addition of a few sections of high school mathematics, we were able to add a support class, which we don't need to write a description for because that's more targeted to students who have a database need for mathematics support. We were able to do that with a licensed math teacher for both high school and middle school students. But we're able to add a third option for high school seniors on the math track, so that they no longer have to take AP Calculus, but can stay on the Honors track and take Honors Calculus. And that is added into, so for students on that normal trajectory where they would take geometry, Algebra II, and then pre-calculus through their first three years, they now have the option of taking AP Calculus, Honors Calculus, or Probability and Statistics, so that they have an option at each of those levels, which, all of which are considered by the state to be advanced coursework in the accountability.
So what's the difference, Brian, between Honors and AP?
It moves at a different pace. It's, it's an introductory level, and you know, they, they will get to the edge of the definite integral, they'll start out with limits and spend a great deal of time in limits, and then working with trigonometry and elements of analytical geometry that are applicable to understanding the basics of differentiation. So the course, the meat of the course really would be probably about one-third of the course covering limits and into trigonometry and analytic geometry, probably about one-third of the course, if not a little bit more, covering differentiation, and then basically an introduction to just the definite integral, whereas AP Calc, AP goes right through in an in-depth understanding of the definite integral and, you know, being, students being able to apply integration for standardized exam.
And am I correct in my memory, this may be changed since I was in the past, it's a long time ago, but essentially, because you're preparing to take an examination, some colleges will give you college credit for, upon entering college, an AP exam. AP courses are technically designed to operate just like a college course.
Correct.
Those one Honors courses, it'd still be a rigorous course, but it's a high school course, and AP courses really technically at the same level as college courses, and that student demonstrates that they've met that standard by passing the exam.
Correct.
If they're better at college as well, and they're credited, or they used to be credited by that.
Yes. It varies from school to school. And one of, you know, depending on what score students get, you know, some students, some colleges will only accept five, some colleges don't accept it at all, but many students do it because they have an understanding of the impact it has on their transcript in terms of competition. But, you know, it also provides an option that Ms. Horowitz is piloting this year, where we have some students who have taken Honors pre-calc and are in, are now, some students have moved to Honors Calculus, but we also have some younger students who have taken pre-calculus at an earlier age, and this provides them the opportunity to take an Honors Calculus course and be better prepared to take Advanced Placement Calculus in their senior year. So we have a couple of students who are going to have the opportunity now to potentially graduate with five courses in mathematics before the end of high school. And that provides us an opportunity over the course of this year to consider in a STEM track, whether it's in mathematics, that students can advance themselves in mathematics one year further because we now have a course that students can take in their junior year prior to AP Calculus.
Brian, is this course Media and Communications, is this where, where is this?
Yes.
I really like the description. And we talk about individual, other students, individual citizens. I think it's, it's encouraging to see that, especially in early middle school grades.
And we wish it could be a course that all, you know, it will give us the opportunity to integrate some things that we believe, you know, certainly the ethics of dealing with communication. We know that we don't do effective, ineffective job as schools, as parents, you know, there are still things that we need to integrate in, so that we make sure that every student gets it, and even here, we're not going to hit every student because it's elective, but at least it's going to give us the opportunity to pilot aspects of that curriculum, do an assessment, and look at places where we can make commitments to helping students to come out of school with a really solid understanding of messaging, both sending and receiving, an understanding of basic communication skills, having an understanding of those times when you can write the angry email and then delete it rather than sending it. You know, and having, you know, using things that are out there in the media to develop an understanding of, you don't have to be broadcasting your life to everybody, you know, and there are probably times that you shouldn't, and here's the reason why. So it provides us fodder for being able to learn from the mistakes of many others out there, you know, before we make them ourselves. And those are, those are really the only changes that needed to be highlighted for the program of studies, so there's only those three.
Any questions? This is also an actual item in the study.
Is that good?
Aye. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Beck, you're good. Go get some sleep. Excellent opening day. Thank you for all you did to make it successful, so thank you for that.
Yeah. Okay, Annie, community engagement.
Yes, so a couple things to bring you up to speed on. You had, the school committee had its retreat in July, and several themes emerged from that retreat. Then the administrators and I had a meeting with Bill Deal, he's the executive director of Collaborative for Educational Services. He kindly, rather than having one of his staff, all of his staff are great too, but he is going to be working with our leadership team throughout the year. So we spent five hours with him, I don't remember what day, Thursday of last week. We talked about some of the things the school committee had discussed in terms of priorities around connecting, demonstrating to students, connecting with them, demonstrating to students that we care about them, that we know them, and engaging with families and with our community. A theme that emerged for the leadership team was asking ourselves, what can we do specifically to design and implement structures that support diversity and foster inclusion, so along that same theme. We did talk about with Mr. Deal, the fact that, he's Dr. Deal actually, but he just goes by Bill. We talked with Bill about not making radical changes in that strategy document just for the next year. Again, those four major objectives are aligned to the educator evaluation framework. These are the things on which you evaluate me, and I evaluate the principals, and we have a new principal and a new director of student services. So there wouldn't be necessarily major changes. What you would see are changes in activities, like what does that mean to do those things well? This idea of connecting, caring, and as the leadership team said, designing and implementing structures that support diversity and foster inclusion, that there should be evidence in each one of those standards, in instruction, in management and operations, which is around building culture, family, community engagement, and professional culture, in their school improvement or school strategy documents, in the program, special education strategy document, and in the district strategy document, you should see evidence of those themes in each one of those broad categories. And you will see those in October, which will give an opportunity for our principals and the special education director to have spoken with CPAC, meet with their school councils, get input from faculty, and as well as look at some data. So that's what we're doing with CES. I wrote a letter to Bill Deal and copied his board chair because he did just wonderful work with us. I'm really appreciative of everything the Collaborative does for our district and all of its members. It was really high-quality work, and we'll continue doing that work throughout the year. And Whole Children, I had a meeting with Whole Children. Whole Children is a nonprofit agency right here in Hadley, in the Hadley Farms Mall. And we're talking about ways in which, now Whole Children does not just serve families from Hadley, but they are a resource for people with disabilities and for their families, children with disabilities and their families. So I met with them to talk about how we might work with them to connect our students, have opportunities for our students who might be described as typically developing, for them to connect with students with disabilities throughout the Pioneer Valley. It's hard for us to get a really good best buddies program going because our numbers are so small. And especially at the high school, and I understand this, some students, some students who may have an individual education program, or students who may have a qualifying disability for special education, aren't interested in that age in being in the best buddies program. And so we're brainstorming with them about how we can look at this more of a community effort, to ask ourselves, what can we do to seek out anyone in our community who's at a greater risk of being, feeling isolated, being marginalized, or being disconnected? What are our obligations to seek them out? And how do we fulfill our obligation to advocate on behalf of those who are at risk of being marginalized and to show, to be kind? So we just started having the conversation, I'll keep you informed of where that's going. And I don't have it on here, but when I mentioned the retreat, it connects with community engagement. So your lemonade and hot dog idea that everyone got excited about, and I said, oh dear, I've got to plan a lemonade and hot dog party. Well, guess what? Everybody's really excited about it. I, I actually mentioned it at a town department chair meeting after your school committee retreat. So sometime, let's say that was, whenever that was, that was at a town department chair meeting, and they started talking about, well, you know, like Public Safety does something in spring to try to connect with the community, the select board and other town departments said it would be nice for our boards to have an informal place to say, this is who we are, this is what we do, this is how you get questions answered. And certainly, the town has an interest in encouraging people to participate in onboards and run for offices. And the, one of the chairpeople of Hadley Mothers Club, Denise Devine, came in to see me to talk about their events for the year. And she mentioned that Hadley Mothers Club and PTO had been floating around this idea of having some sort of community event. So she is going to take it back to her board, this idea, also connect with PTO, and it may be something even bigger than what we had initially talked about, giving people a chance to get to know their school committee and ask questions about their schools, that it may be a bigger town event, because there are other folks and other groups who are interested in, in connecting with people in town and letting people know who they are and what they do. That's a fancy way of me saying, I think I just delegated hot dogs and lemonade to people who can do it well. And at the same time, and, and event that I think that could be really wonderful for the community.
Great.
Yeah. So that's community engagement.
Alright. Okay, capital planning and Fall Town meeting.
So I put "us" on here and then forgot to ask Chris to, to put the capital plan in the packet.
I did email it to everybody a few minutes ago, so.
Okay. But it hasn't changed all that much. We just have to be clear about, I think you can also talk about what you sent over to the town in terms of what will be on Fall Town meeting, and I also know that Heather will be looking for someone to represent the school committee to act as a liaison with the capital planning committee, so we need to talk about that. So the real purpose is just to let them know what, what we have on the warrant right now.
Sure. So at the last, the last time we reviewed this, which was probably in June, we had two items on this year's capital plan, cafeteria equipment replacement and health and security upgrades. The health and security upgrades, we've, we've discussed, you know, again, I hesitate to discuss that in open session, but the cafeteria equipment, it has gone up slightly from where I was before. We, when we talked about replacing the cooler, excuse me, the freezer in the Hopkins cafeteria kitchen, Diane Zach got a quote for replacement, and when the guy came out, he said, well, both of these are equally as old, and the way they're placed is it's the freezer and then the cooler on the outside, so he said, you're, you're really crazy to replace the freezer with, you know, with where the floor was rustling through. He says, you're going to end up replacing the cooler in a couple of years, but it's on the inside of the freezer, so we're going to have to remove the freezer again to get to the cooler, so he recommended just changing them, both of them out at one time, which admittedly does make a lot of sense. So that amount has been revised to reflect this. That is also what I submitted to the town, probably, I think at the beginning of August, for placement on the warrant at the Fall Town meeting. I wanted to make sure we had it on there, because, you know, it, it's certainly easy to go down on the dollar amount, not as easy to go up, so I figured that was probably the logical move to make. And those were the only two items that we had going to Fall Town meeting and on this year's portion of the capital plan.
That seems reasonable regarding the-
That seems reasonable regarding the cafeteria equipment in terms of efficiencies and, you know, doing that.
So you replaced the freezer and the cooler?
Correct, yes.
My only thing to add is, I didn't have folks on the paper that they're, the planning board is talking about what to do with parking here by the old building, the old North Star building. Yeah. And so they're talking about they have planned to put 30 parking spaces there and connect it to Hopkins, the egress. So I haven't seen them yet, but I've seen if that gets approved and folks want to do that, why not look in our estimate, which we have down here, is 232. I don't know how low that bid is, but a bad estimate.
That is a very.
If they could put up that section, maybe we'll just do it all, which is what we need to.
Well, maybe if the school committee were interested and the town had an appetite for that, then we could update those estimates and they thought that made sense. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think at one point, that with all the grounds work that's going to take place, not wanting to rip up the, like, a newly paved parking lot and so, I think the reason for the delay, but there was not, the idea of parking lot was not even in existence then. If there's another way to get back there, if there's a, maybe that was a best.
Did you want to ask about, that might be a next thing.
Yeah, so is that discussion part of capital planning or part of a different meeting that they're having in terms of the parking lot over there?
I don't know. David Tudrin put together the plan, I'm sorry, so I was going to contact him.
Okay. Yeah, because Christian Stanley had reached out to me about having a capital planning liaison from the school committee attend their meetings, and unfortunately, their meeting is tonight.
Is it?
At the same time, the capital plan meeting.
Really?
Yes. And so I did tell him I would get back to him about having a liaison. I think, I think it's a good idea. I don't know that we need to formally appoint somebody like we do with other subcommittees, but maybe have it more floating as to who is interested in attending. And I would think with the field work, you know.
Yeah, if they're interested there, they'd be nice to have a backup.
Yeah. Is there anybody else that's interested in being a backup with that?
I'm very.
Yeah. I mean, I can always be a backup as needed, but maybe we have you as the prime and then we can figure out, because I also don't know whether Keith is interested in that too.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get back to Christian and copy you on that.
Okay. So they're probably talking about what we submitted for the fall.
So every single department submitted. This 10-year plan is now townwide. And Christian was wonderful when he called me also and said, he just wants to make sure that the school department doesn't get lost in the conversation, because there's so much happening right now in terms of building projects. So it'd be nice to have a school committee liaison. And so it's not, you, no school committee member, just like with tri-board, it's, you know, certainly no more than two people are there at a time that you don't vote on matters there. You converse with them and, but you're not, you're not voting on anything. And then we also don't have to worry about issues in terms of, their meetings are public posted meetings, but you don't then represent a quorum of this body. But you certainly contribute, just like in tri-board, answering questions. But that's, I think it's to keep all departments represented in that conversation.
So to go, just to go back to the capital budget and timeline, any concerns or questions with what we've got mapped out here? Understanding the caveats about rough estimates from, you know, and some of these are very dated.
Yeah. And something like the parking lot, of course, if you remember a couple of years ago where we fixed the drain area that was sinking into the ground. So it's one of those Pandora's Box, more or less, you just don't know what you're going to find. So, you know, we could certainly get an updated estimate, but they'd probably give a quote and then say, it's contingent upon what we find when we strip the old parking lot out, you know. So it would be one of those things where we'd want some kind of a contingency in effect just to, you know, take care of it if there was something that really needed work.
I think it'd be very helpful to participate in this conversation, have school committee representation at the table.
Yeah.
I'm also thinking of something else related to this. So we do our best estimate, and those estimates are very rough, because as we've explained before, we're not going out and getting up-to-date bids and then not giving people jobs, because they'll just stop bidding on jobs or drive their prices up when they do bid on jobs. But it's also so we can see, I mean, we're, this is just one piece of the pie, and as I said, then there's all these other departments, and the town is trying to then set priorities for all of these departments and connect projects, where do they make sense? Something else that came up, I believe it was Christian who asked me about this, is in the moves with the senior center and the library, Hadley Media is looking for a home. So they asked what kind of space we have here. Now, we really, I explained to Christian that, one, I have to let the dust settle in terms of classrooms, enrollments, and where everybody finally lands. So off the top of my head, I couldn't think of, we're very pressed for space already here at Hopkins, but I certainly said we would look at it. But then he brought up that there was even a discussion about where their longer-term home would be. And I said, well, if the school committee has just started talking about and exploring, would there be a time in which a mass school building authority project might make sense? So it would be good to be a part of that conversation early on, right? As the town's having these longer-term plans around buildings. That's something else that may come up.
And that's, you know, at a higher level, that makes a lot of sense. On a, on a smaller level, you know, the Browns project is something that has come up many times. It's very visible, it's pretty well-known. The other big item on here is year three with the lockers, and I know it's come up a number of times for us. Last, sort of very large substantial, out of the norm expenses that we did was the computer upgrade that I can think of, right? It's not as global as what you anticipate is happening out in a few years. How much, is there any awareness building that we need to do as we did that for the computer upgrade project so that that goes as smooth as possible? Or do we feel as though there's a good level of awareness and understanding that that girl's locker room is in terrible shape? She has not been upgraded in a very long time. Because people aren't walking through the girls' locker room, it's very, it's not evident.
Becoming a strategy is pretty.
I don't know how much awareness there is, and if it's selected, right? Because, you know, I haven't heard about it other than through here, because it's not like my son is talking about it.
That's right.
Right? So that's, but I agree that being strategic about how we talk about that well in advance of next year is good, because it is a, it is a big ticket.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Even just talking about, like, what some of the modernizations of it would be, or what kind of, you know, enhancements it offers that we don't have now.
Right.
And bringing in a line with, you know, kind of modern day facilities.
Maybe it's the vision told through the eyes of the young female athletes and their coaches. Maybe it's, you know, taking in consideration real, sort of, current day standards for locker rooms at other campuses that they're going to, that they're traveling to, and they're able to write about it and talk about it, and we're able to set the stage for, you know, a bulletproof argument to get that funding.
Sure.
My daughter's not an athlete. I doubt she'll be stepping foot in the girls' locker room except for Katie, but I think it's an equity thing. And if we want to be competitive and attract the best students, all students, female students included, we need to have a good locker room.
That makes sense. Okay. Anything else on capital planning or the fall town meeting?
No. We'll keep checking in on it.
Yep. Okay. And that we don't need to do anything for approvals?
Nope.
All right. Okay, personnel report.
So it looks rather busy. It's in your package. And so in some cases, just so you know, you had resignations previously from ESPs, which is why you see so many new hires for educational support professionals. So you had seen resignations earlier. And in some cases, we have folks who had informed us that they were going to be working for another agency and then were thrilled. Then they emailed us and said, that's not what I thought it was going to be. Can I come back? And the job was still posted. So it still registers as a hire, because they had resigned and then they came back. But some of these are returning phases. And, yeah, so that's why it looks busy.
Congratulations on filling all of those positions.
Yes, and we may have, yes, so, and we may still have an educational support professional, we may still have another. In some cases, obviously this, some of these are driven by individual students' education programs and plans that require one-to-one support or require a certain kind of support that meant we had to hire folks. And in some cases, those students, we have students here who are, who are the responsibility, financial responsibility of Hadley Public Schools, because, or the town of Hadley, because they live in Hadley. In some cases, they're students who are school choice students. And as I say, the wonderful part about that is that the financial responsibility rests with the sending town. And we get the benefit of having a hire that does more than, I mean, we get benefits from that. So that's great, too.
So given that math is not on the current vacancy, and we had a resignation, but you've got some new hires, and we heard from Mr. Beck about the influx of math interest. It sounds like we're okay.
We are okay. We are in good shape. We are in good shape. Yes. We're fully staffed with certified teaching physicians, and we're not 100% sure that we need another ESP. We, Ms. Haywood stopped me in the hall today and said, I might. I said, at this point, I probably wouldn't notice at this point. I mean, just, we've had so much activity here, but she'll keep me posted.
Moving on to public comment. Any public comments? I guess not. Nobody here. Okay. Business manager report.
Okay, so we have a few things to go over. The expense report, you have the printed copy in front of you. I apologize, it wasn't in your package. We actually had a Vadar issue where, for whatever reason, this report would not update with anything past June 30th. So it wasn't until this afternoon, about 2:30, I was actually able to work with them and get it straightened out. So here you have it. I mean, I couldn't quite understand what was wrong when we already spent the full amount of people's salary after no days of school. So you would have, you would have not liked that report. So this one's much better.
That's it, we're done.
And really not a lot, you know, it's early in the school year, so, I mean, there are some accounts that are over. There's one account that's over in contracted services, but we have to transfer some of those expenses out to another account, so that's, you know, that's easily remedied. And other than that, so far, we're looking pretty good.
So just a question about, like, page seven, electricity and fuel, oil and gas and propane and natural gas. It always seems like every year, we never know, with like locking in rates and fluctuations. Anything on the horizon on that that you can think of?
Well, we did lock in, like, for example, you see the oil.
Yeah.
There's $2,000 or $2,200 remaining.
Yeah.
So we lock in for the elementary school and the high school and for Hopkins. So those prices are pretty much what we've bought. You know, we, we own that oil to be delivered throughout the year.
Yeah.
With the exception of the $2,200, that amount is for the central office building that we can't lock in, because, you know, they have these huge tanker trucks that just can't fit down the driveway to put 300 gallons of oil in our tank. They usually deliver 7,000 at a time to each of the two buildings. So, you know, that, that amount, unless we have an unusually cold winter, which actually last year we did, and we ended up having to buy some additional oil, because the heat was just running nonstop. But that should be, you know, pretty much all set. Propane and natural gas, some of that is to be split with the cafeteria. So again, it all went in here in the encumbrance column, but we will transfer some out into the cafeteria. You know, telephone, that's, that's never really an issue. And the electricity, again, that's kind of a wild card. Mary encumbered what we had used last year. You know, again, and I think this year we do have the loan for the improvements coming off, so that would be, I believe it might be in February. So we'll have a few months of $1,000 less than what we had last year. That pretty much puts us right in the ballpark again. So, yeah, those are typically a wild card. To be honest, the real wild card in this is water and sewer, which, I spoke with Jeff Mish about this, because just looking at the bills for water and sewer, the elementary school uses about, I forgot now, it was three or four times as much as Hopkins. And, you know, I mean, student numbers, they have more students there, but not, not that much that you'd think it'd be three to four times as much. So I spoke with Jeff about it, and he said that, well, you know, the kids wash their hands a lot, you know, which is not a bad thing. But it's, it's something we're watching, because, you know, as a result of that, of course, then the sewage costs also go up, because they're, they're tied to your water bill. I did speak with him about the potential of a leak outside of the building, you know, sometimes you'd have a leak in the water line coming in. But he said the water meter is in the building, so if there was a leak, it's before the water meter, so that wouldn't be reflected in our bill anyway. And of course, if there was a leak in the building, we'd know about it. So it's just one of those items that we're looking at, because, you know, watering of fields, which we don't do, but for example, with the athletic fields, when we do have an irrigation system, we're going to need a separate meter for that. Otherwise, we'll be paying sewage on water that's going out in the fields and not through any pipes or anything, so.
If we do the well, then we're good.
If we do the well, then, yeah, then we're all set with that as well. But, you know, I mean, it's, it's that kind of thing that, you know, I asked him, are we watering fields? And he said, no. So, you know, we're watching it.
Great, thank you.
Grant report. There's nothing at this point in time. The, a couple of the grants are actually running until August 31st, so we can't apply for a new one until the, you know, current year is done. We've already spent all of the grant money and all of the grants for FY18, so there's nothing left to spend in any of those. And even the FY19 grants, there's only a couple of them that have been approved. The rest are in application process or waiting for the grant year to end. Revolving accounts report, you have, I think it's the last page in your meeting package. Yes, it is. Again, you can see lunch accounts, for example, again, that's in the negative. We have the same issue. You're liking that, aren't you?
Yeah.
We have the same issue again, where, you know, we'll get the June reimbursement in July, and we had some come in, but they just said that there was going to be an update on that, so apparently they, they being the government, gave the wrong amount. So they're going to give us some additional funds as far as that goes. However, as I said here, I expect a tight year with the lunch program. I think it's, it's really just going to be one of those things that, you know, it's, it's always tight at this point in time. You know, last year, if you look, we started at $5,500 in June, and we had the same kind of experience, where, you know, you see in July, and, not really in August, but in July, the amount went up considerably, because we had those reimbursements come in. We're starting this year $6,000 in the hole with reimbursements coming in. So, you know, if we ended the year in the hole, when we started with $6,000, we're not going to do much better if we're starting with negative 6,000. And I did transfer a portion of our food services director's salary to the local budget to take some of that off of the lunch accounts. Obviously, I'll have to do that again in FY19.
The school choice reflects, but it gets lower this time of year anyway.
Yeah, the school choice reflects the final closeout of FY18, which we are still waiting on. waiting on. We had an issue with one of the electric bills where it was, was paid by the town, our bill, and they charged our accounts to it, but we never got the bill. It went right to the town hall. It was, it was the Hadley Solar bill, which does go straight to the town hall. Then they mark off which bills, you know, which portion of the bill is ours, and they send it over. This particular time, the town accountant was on vacation, so someone else paid the bill, charged our account, and then I went over and I said, hey, I'm waiting for that Hadley Solar bill. It hasn't come yet. And so they, they gave us the bill and said, okay, you know, pay your portion. So we paid our portion, and then they said, oh, we paid it already. So they were sending the whole bill back, then it got credited to FY19 because this was already in July. So there's a little bit of a, of a truing up on the town side. It's, it's apparently quite tricky to undo an FY19 expense and move it to 18. So Justin is taking care of that, and once that is done, we'll be able to do that final entry to bring the amount back up to zero. I used $250,000 here. The rough estimates that I had now were 249 and change, so it's, it's going to be pretty close to what, what was estimated.
On school choice?
Yes. Yeah, you can see at the bottom here, it came down by, well, it didn't come down by 250 because, of course, we also got in the revenue for the month of June, but the 250 was being charged.
Where are the estimates coming from? I'm not trying to shout at you, so everybody can hear, but where are the estimates coming from?
The estimates for the transfer of the June.
Oh, yeah, so I'm getting confused here. This is final June, final FY18, not any estimates into FY19.
Right, yep. Yep, this is as of June 30th.
Sorry, I think, I thought you were talking about estimates into 19. I thought maybe I hadn't, something had come out of the department that I had.
Oh, no, no, unfortunately not.
Okay.
So, just one more question on school choice. Last year went from about this level up to a million the new year. Do we expect an increase again this year?
I could probably better, we can much better answer that question in, after we submit our October 1 data. But what I can do, so I think, I showed you where for our FY19 estimates, I took out, I just eliminated seniors. And I, and as you can tell, we have 67 students who enrolled, many of whom are school choice. So by just eliminating seniors, and we also had some students that choice to other districts. So that, that's the best estimate, but it's not a very good one. And then on October 1, every single school district has to submit their actual data of who is sitting in your, who is attending your schools and where do they live. And so when we do that, D-Raximioffis does that, communicates with all the surrounding districts, then I have a much better picture of what, at the end of October, we can bring you a better estimate after that. And then certainly by November, when the state has certified all that data and they send us an updated Excel workbook, then we can do it really to the penny, assuming no kids move in or move out.
Okay, Mary, you've covered capital plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Great, then we'll move to topic eight, school committee reports and discussion. Policy, I know Keith and I are policy subcommittee.
Yes.
We'll have a meeting at some point in the future.
Riveting, paper-heavy meeting for you.
We are looking forward to it.
Thank me now.
Finance and tri board, I don't think we've had a meeting since we last met, so I have no idea on that. Fields, Paul?
We're still working on fundraising. We had a call, meetings recently with some funders, and we're waiting to react.
That's exciting.
Yeah, Chris, you've been working. Yeah, we're trying to get the logistics moving.
I did get a response today. I called and emailed again.
This is Berkshire Design?
Yes, and I got a response to that saying that he would have a summary of the changes needed in the next couple of days for us. And I'll, I'll forward that on as soon as I receive it. But yeah, apparently they had, you know, several changes to the plans that needed to be made and.
Have they met with the conservation group?
No. They were supposed to meet at the August meeting, and they were placing the ad in the newspaper, and apparently they placed it a day too late to be, you know, enough of a lead time for the meeting. So I got the phone call saying, I'm sorry, we can't do it in August.
Let me know when it's gonna, it's gonna be in September, I assume, because I'd like to attend that.
Yeah, I have, and I forwarded this to you. I got it this afternoon.
Did you?
They, they submitted the legal ad for the newspaper on August 16th. They will have the plans with revisions to the conservation commission by next Tuesday, a good week before the hearing. So I'm not sure of the actual meeting date. I'll have to find that out. For some reason, I'm thinking September 12th, but I, I'm not really sure, so I'll find that out.
So these are comments that Berkshire Design received from Mass DEP, requested changes, so that's what they're working on. And they're meeting with the heavy conservation commission.
Let us know if you need any other support for that, have a conservation commission meeting.
And we should probably plan after that to go brief CPA.
Yeah. So that was September 12th, the Hadley meeting, conservation commission?
I don't think we have the date, but we will ask.
Somewhere around there.
Actually, we can look it up on the town website. They may have posted it. It's a Hadley meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look it up right now.
Yeah, if you go to the town website, it's probably posted already.
And I did talk yesterday to those funders that were, I know there was another name you gave me. I haven't heard from you personally, but the other funding group is, they're meeting soon.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, anything else on fields? Okay, Mara, CES.
So there was not a meeting of the CES in August, but they, due to the length of time between meetings, they shared an executive director's report, which I shared with you all today. Take a look, they're doing some great work. A particular note was they're organizing a team to look at and identify needs of their districts that they could serve. And I believe they facilitated a conversation. I'm not sure any of you were part of that.
I was there, yeah.
Terrific. Sounds like it was a vibrant discussion.
Yeah.
Lots of important ideas were shared about the things that districts are struggling with. And CES is brainstorming, looking at ways that it can help solve those needs. So take a look at the report, and I'll attend their September meeting and look back.
Great, thank you.
And that conservation committee is September 11.
Is it?
Yeah.
Do you know the time?
Do you know what time they meet? Do you still have that window open?
They do. Let's see. 7:00 PM. Second Tuesdays of the month at 7:00 PM in the select board meeting room of the town hall.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a couple action items before we go into executive session. First is approval of AP warrants submitted in July 2018. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve APs submitted in July 2018.
All in favor? All abstain? Okay, approval of July 30th, 2018 minutes. Any questions or comments, revisions to the minutes?
No, that was a.
Nice, nice job. It was a great, great session. Good capture of it. All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the July 30th minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An approval of the warrants submitted in July 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We already did the other approvals. Our next regular meeting date is scheduled for September 24th, 2018, at 5:30. Any conflicts with that? As we all look at our calendars. Okay, that's good to me. All right, we will plan on that. I do need somebody, if they could read the statement underneath number two, executive session, we will reconvene afterwards.
Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with prospective collective bargaining and contract negotiations with non-union personnel. I have determined that open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and to reconvene in open session.
Okay, we need a roll call vote. Keith is absent.
I'm going to do a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Keith absent. Tara?
Yes.
Mara? And myself? Yes. Okay, we will go into executive session.